Welcome to the Speak Uneasy, a safe space where cancel culture does not exist because we are in a different prohibition era.
Good evening and welcome to the Speak Uneasy. Now I've just opened my Bible up for the random read for the night and I've landed on the book of Amos, chapter 5. "A Lamentation for Israel." Verse 1. "Hear ye this word which I take up against you, even a lamentation, O house of Israel. The virgin of Israel is fallen; she shall no more rise; she is forsaken upon her land; there is none to raise her up. For thus seteth the Lord God: The city that went out by a thousand shall leave an hundred, and that which went forth by an hundred shall leave ten to the house of Israel." So once again, that was the book of Amos, chapter 5, verse 1, all the way to verse 3, titled "A Lamentation for Israel." And that is my random read for the night. Now getting into the cocktail for the night, it's gonna be a very simple cocktail that we're gonna make tonight. Uh, the part of the country where I'm at right now is very gloomy and rainy, so... Originally, I wanted to go with a neat drink tonight, but I said to myself, "I'm just gonna make something simple instead." Um, because I'd like to share how to make cocktails. I mean, if I told you that I made a neat drink, there's really no challenge to making it. You just pour whatever liquor you use, so I... I'm gonna make something pretty simple today, so... Right now, I've got, I've already got my glass pre-chilled. It already has the sphere, um, ice in it. Now what I have is, I have a... I have a Japanese whiskey. That is, um, it has a little smoke to it. So what I'm gonna do is I'm gonna free pour it, free pour. And kinda just gauge. Um, I free poured about an ounce and a half, maybe two, into my glass that's already been chilled. So next, I'm gonna take soda water. And I'm gonna pour that into my glass as well. And with that, I'm gonna put a dab of lemon juice. And I have just made a Japanese highball. As they would call it in Japan, "Japaneseu Haeboru." Japanese highball. Cheers. It's a refreshing drink when it's hot. And right now where I'm at, it's pretty, it's, it's, I like it gloomy. It's pretty gloomy and rainy out there right now, um, so... I just decided, you know, I don't wanna, I don't wanna bore people with just a neat pour and besides, I really can't mention what I'm using. Like, I can't mention the types of, um, I mean, I can tell you what type of liquor I'm using, but I just can't tell you the brand of liquor I'm using. So, there it is, the Japanese highball. Now... Let's get into this today. Now, I have a theory on the reason why the Democrats have run Joe Biden as their presidential pick for their party and I have a theory on why this campaign's just been, been poorly run. Um... I mean, if you notice, first off, he doesn't seem to be fit to be the leader of the free world. He doesn't look fit to make decisions as the commander in chief. That's for sure. And I don't need to explain to you people, I mean, if you've been following politics and believe me, even if you don't follow politics, it's been forced upon us because of what's going on around us. All the changes, everything has been pretty much politicized, including this stupid seat, this stupid, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm gonna talk in alphabetic, alphabetic language here, including the Charlie Victor 1-9 situation. It's been heavily politicized, as, as, uh, everything has, everything has been politicized, so... Whether or not you follow politics, you, it's pretty clear to see that Biden is really not in his right mind to lead the free country, the free world. He's, there's just no way, there's, there's no way, in my opinion, that he's gonna win. Honestly. The Democrats may cheat and just, I have no proof of this, but just mind you, that this is all my commentary. Even with the last election, when the Democrats had Hillary and Sanders running against each other as the, who's gonna be the Democrat pick for president, the, the presidential candidate. It was clear that Sanders was winning. Mind you, I am not a communist, I'm not a Bernie bro or anything like that, but just from my, my observation, Bernie had a lot more supporters than, than Hillary, I mean Hillary did. So... I think what happened is the, she, I mean, my, my guess is she cheated. And it's just my guess. I mean, what do I know? Um, I'm just somebody who's observing from the outside. Now... Notice that all these situations that Biden's gotten into with, you know, doing these interviews where he's being flat out racist. Um, I mean, he was accusing, he, he was on, um, he was being interviewed by Charlamagne, I don't know, I think he was Power One, I was like, "I don't know, I, I don't watch these shows, I don't know." But I think he was being interviewed and he said something defective, "Well, if you don't know who you're voting, if you don't..." I'm not voting. Huh, "voting"? That's, yeah, that's a little Filipino, um, pronunciation of "voting." But anyways, "If you don't know who you're voting for, then you ain't black." Now, that seems like a very racist, um, statement to me. And on top of that, I mean, with, with the, with, with all the bills that, um, Biden was involved in as a senator back in the 90s, it was clear that he was targeting, um, the black community. But anyways, um, he also, he was on another show being interviewed and somebody asked him about taking some kind of, um, test for his, um, for comprehension. And, um, he said to the guy something to the effect of, "Come on, man, this is just like you taking cocaine before this show." And, um, yeah, he's, I, I think he's just done, lost it. I think he's just done. You know, um, either he's, either he's really losing it. And this is just my theory about Biden. I mean... I'm all about theories. Even if you call them conspiracy theories, hey, you know what? Anything is possible in this world and you need to have an open mind to anything that is possible. You know, you can't, you can't limit yourself into a box, into thinking one way or another. Your mind has to be open to all sorts of possibilities. So anyways, I don't wanna go off on a tangent there, but, um, uh, with Biden, there, there's one or two things that's going on with Biden. Cause he's in, let's face it, he's in deep trouble. He's in deep trouble with the whole Burisma thing, with his son, uh, working in, um, Ukraine, um, and bribing the Ukrainian government to fire, uh, uh, some kind of attorney general over there, over a billion dollars or something like that. Now, here's, 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 here's two, two ways you can look at this. One way is, yeah, it's legit that he, he's, he's probably losing his mind, he's getting senile. He has, uh, he's, he's developing, um, he's developing, um, um, not Parkinson's, but the other, um, man, I'm, it looks like I'm developing that right now, just by forgetting what the name of these, uh, these, um, Alzheimer's. There you go, man. Yeah, that's not a good sign. I think I may have started to get, I'm showing signs of it right now and I'm only in my 40s, but anyways, um, he's, he's either, he's really developing some kind of Alzheimer's, um, uh, disease that's progressing really fast. And I think, I think it was not too recently that somebody said, "Hey, Joe, you have no chance," and he said, "Yeah, you're right." So he's, he's, he's losing it. I mean, he's waving to, he gets out of his plane waving to nobody, that's, that's bizarre. So he's really actually losing it, or and people who's watched The Sopranos can probably relate to this, but he probably is taking a play out of Carrato Soprano's book. And if you don't know, if you don't know what I'm talking about, he's faking, he's probably faking it, he's faking that he's losing it so that when it comes for him to face the music with him being in trouble with this whole Ukraine connection and Burisma, they won't be able to prosecute him because he's insane. So... There's one or two ways you can go in, in the direction of why Joe is the way Joe is right now. So, um, that's my take on it. And it seems to me that the, they're just, it's just bad. The way that they're running him is real bad. It's just, it's obviously bad. And it's almost to the point where the Democrats are being demoralized. And here's my take on it. Here's my take on it. And like I said, you have to keep an open mind to think what kind of possibilities there are, okay? So, the reason that I think, the reason why I think that they're running him so poorly, and mind you, I've, um, I've watched this very interesting interview on the X22 Report Spotlight, where he interviewed the praying medic. And if you don't know who that is, you guys gotta follow because X22 Report, he puts out such great information out there. Um, and so does the praying medic. I really, I really, really respect the praying medic. He's such a great guy. Um, his story about how he found God is amazing, but I don't wanna go off in that tangent right now because I'm speaking about the theory on why Joe Biden's campaign is being run so bad. Hold on while I take a sip of this drink. Okay, so... They're demoralizing the Democrats with Joe Biden's campaign. They're making him look so bad, they're, they're making it seem, they're making it seem like he has no chance in winning. And even, even the, even the Trump supporters are saying, there's no, you know, they're, it's almost as if they're so overly confident that there's no way Trump is gonna lose. Now here's my theory. So, you beat down, you know, you get, you beat down the people so bad, you demoralize them, that you, that when it gets to a point where you're gonna bring, you're gonna bring somebody out of the blue to pick up, pick up the, you know, pick the party back up. You're gonna bring a savior, quotes. You're gonna bring some kind of savior to, to, to save your party, like instantly. And I think that's the ploy that the Democrats are using. Now, mind you, that my theory on who the person might be to pick the Democratic Party back up would be... Uh, I'm, I'm trying to be respectful here, uh-huh. Is, their pick is gonna be Michael, I mean, Michelle Obama. That, that's, that's my theory and here's the reason, the reasoning for my theory. Michael, I mean Michelle, has been a very likable, um, person for the Democrats. Almost to the point that they wanted, they wanted Michael, I mean Michelle, to run. Um, but she, she didn't put her name in the ticket, so... At the same time, um, while Trump was going around the world doing his job as a president, making all these deals with all these countries and, and peace deals and whatnot, and business deals, um, Barry, I mean Barack, um, Barack Obama was being a shadow, he was doing a shadow campaign. Meaning he would, he would go and also to these other countries and make some sort, he, he would do all these speaking events and you know, try to push that Trump is a bad dude and all these things. So, at the same time, you know, Michael, I mean Michelle came out with a book. So, it, it seems to me that, uh, uh, Michelle, Michelle is, is, uh, might be the possible person to pick the Democratic Party back up. So... That's the reason why I think they're running Slow Mo Joe poorly, is because they wanna demoralize as much as they can, to the point that when somebody comes up, you know, out of the blue, that person will be their savior. So, that's my take on why Slow Mo Joe's campaign is being run so bad. Is because they're, they're, they're going for that Hail Mary move of hoping that the person would, uh, the person to come out of the blue to, 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 to save, will be their savior. So that's, that's the reason why I think Michelle might be the possible candid, you know, the possible person to be the presidential candidate for the Democrats at a last minute play from the Democrats' book. Um, it's, it's pretty much like a, a Hail Mary. And if you think about it too, I think, I think Barack still wants to run the country. I mean, not, you, let's be honest, he wants to run the country down to the ground, like, he made sure our military was as weak as it can get before, before President Trump came in, which President Trump had to build back up and now he's made it even more stronger. So, in an effort for a Hail Mary for the Democrats, I think they're gonna run, they're gonna run Michelle. And if, and if by some odd, some kind, something happens where the Democrats win as Michelle is the quote, "President", the truth is, Barry, I mean Obama, will be the puppeteer for that, as Michelle would be the puppet on the puppet string, as Bear, I mean Obama, Barack, would be pulling the strings, making the decisions. Um, at this point, I don't even think that it matters about who would be the vice president as well. I mean, they ran Harris of all people, the Democrats really hate her. Um, there's no respect for Harris at all, especially after, um, after mayor, the, I don't know if it was the mayor, but she, the way she climbed up the ladder of her political career, um, was, uh, she, let's just say she didn't use her, uh, her mental skills to climb up that ladder. Let's just say she... I don't, you know what? I'll be respectful. I'll leave it at there. So, that's my take on why Slow Mo Joe's campaign is being run like real horribly and also with Michelle being the savior of the Democratic Party last minute, I think it's a big possibility. I mean, it, it, it does make, it kinda does make sense. Um, because it's, I mean, they have nothing, other than that, they have nothing. I don't know if it might be Hillary, it could be Hillary, I'm Hillary, I mean Hillary. It could be, it could be her too. I, I, I don't know, I really don't know, but, but then again, a lot of, a lot of, um, mainstream, um, Democrats, they don't even like Hillary as well. So, you know, she's, she's a sore loser. Like, she's, up till this point, she's still sour about losing against Trump. Nobody likes a sore loser. But then again, a lot of these protesters are losers. So, that's my take on, um, Slow Mo Joe's, um, presidential campaign and why, why it's obviously being run so bad. It's, 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 it's very, it gets to the point where you kinda feel sorry for the guy because it's clear that the Democrats are just, it's, they're using him. He's, he's being used and he's being, he's being used beyond, beyond his mental capacity. It's like, it's worse than beating up somebody who's already dead. Like, you're still beating a body that's... You're, you're, you're beating a body that's already down, but, and you just keep on beating it. I don't, for what? Why? You know? So, that's my take on that. Alright, so, another topic that, um, that would be cool to discuss, that I find interesting. So, on September 15th, there was a council meeting in the city of Minneapolis. And it was interesting because the council people, the majority of them voted to defund the Minneapolis Police Department. Ooh, sorry. They voted to defund the police department and if you, if you take away funds, then that means you have to, your budgets have to be cut somewhere in the department. And I think some of these special task forces have already been taken away because they just don't have the money to fund them anymore. So with that, with all these cuts from the department, with all these, whatever task force they have or where, wherever they cut it from, they've noticed an increase of crime. I don't know why I'm this, I'm discussing this. This is pretty obvious, but, but for entertainment sakes, I'm going to go and discuss this. And and I'm, I'm assuming that a lot of you people listening to the show have some kind of brain on top of your shoulders, um, to figure this one out, but for entertainment purposes, I'm gonna break this down from, from what I think about it. So there's this meeting that happens with the police chief of Minneapolis and he's, he's breaking down every precinct and the increase of crime with every, every precinct that they have in the city and, um, and a lot of these council people are wondering, you know, what's, what's the police department gonna do about this increase of crime and all this stuff? You know, we've seen increase in theft, uh, gun violence and, and, um, robberies and thefts and, and all these other kinds of crimes. Well, my take is, and this is just my take, because that's all you're gonna get from the Speak Uneasy, is my take. It's my show, it's my bar. And I'm about to take a drink of my drink. Well first, my take on this. How are you going to, how are you gonna solve the problems of crime in a city? Well, the root problem of that is parenting. Whether you believe it or not, it's parenting. It all starts from having the nuclear family, having both mom and dad at the house, making sure you discipline your kid, teaching your kid what's right and what's wrong. When your kid messes up, discipline the kid. And you discipline them so that they remember that every time something bad they do happens, there's a consequence for that, that action. I don't need to explain, I don't need to explain this. I mean, this, maybe I do, because there are a lot of kids out there running amok. There are. And I don't understand why parents are so weak in disciplining their kids. Are, this whole theory of you're gonna mentally, you're gonna mentally scar them, bull. Okay? Let me explain something. Because there is a difference between being abused and being disciplined. And I'm going to explain this because when I was younger, I was borderline abused. I was borderline abused. Now that I'm older, I look back, I was borderline abused because of the way, the way I was disciplined. But I took into, I took into, um, I took into account that I effed up and I only got it when I effed up. I didn't get hit for no reason. I always, there was always a reason for me to, to receive what I received. I mean, granted, sometimes it was overboard, but nevertheless, I deserved what I got because I effed up to begin with. And there's always gonna be a consequence for every bad thing you do. So, from what I've learned from that experience, and when I do discipline my kids, I, I'm going to explain first, first, first I'm gonna ask. I'm gonna ask, so then I'll know if they understand or not, right? This is the way, this is the way I would do it. I would, I would, first I would ask, before I do corporal punishment and, you know, I don't, I don't go overboard with this. I don't. I give enough and that's it. I would ask, "Do you know what you did wrong?" And if my child says, "Yes, I know what I did", then there's no, there's no reason for me to, there's no reason for me to explain why I'm doing what I'm gonna do. Because they understand already. But if they didn't understand, I would, I would flip the script on him and, and tell them, "What if I did this to you? How would you react? How would you feel?" And then I make, that's when the, the gears start turning in the brain and then they think to themselves, "You know what? I would think that you're wrong too." So, I give them a lesson where they'll think that, "Yeah, I messed up." So then from there, I ha, I tell them, "Every time you mess up, there has to be a consequence for you in order for you not to make that same mistake again." So, I tell them straight up, you know, "Just take your punishment because you messed up and move on after that and just don't do it again." And that's when I execute punishment and that's that. Now I don't, I don't understand why a lot of parents can't do that to their own kids. What is so hard? Are you that weak? Does the kid have that much power over you? You're supposed to be the prime example for your child, so your child does not grow up to be an F-up. It is your responsibility as a parent to parent. It's not the cop's job to do your job. It's your, it's, it's not. It's your job. You are willing to have a good time with whoever you were doing it with, do the deed, and now you don't wanna, you don't wanna complete the job by raising your kid the right way? That's wrong. That's wrong. No matter, no, cuz I admit, sometimes for me, as I'm execu- when I'm doing corporal punishment on, on my younger child, I feel bad. But I know, I know that if, if my, if my younger child does not learn, and I say younger child because my older child's already grown, he's an, he's an adult. But I, I feel bad for doing it, but at the same time, I say to myself, these kids need the direction, so then they can become good people in society. So, that's what I do. That's what I do to my kids. I make sure that they're gonna be good people in society. I, I corporal, I, I, I do corporal punishing, punishment because I, they need to understand that there's gonna be a, a serious consequence for everything that you do that's very wrong. And also, I, I, I make sure that the disrespect doesn't, they don't, they don't learn to be disrespectful to, to one, their elders, two, their parents, and three, to somebody who's in authoritative position, which would be me, cuz I am the father. It doesn't necessarily mean that I have to be in some kinda position of power. I'm the father. I'm the authoritative figure in the house. So, you know, that's, that's, parents should do that. Whether, huh, I, you know, if, if, if you're weak, then don't be a parent. Don't, don't, don't have kids. If, if you know you're weak, don't freaking have kids because we don't need, we don't need parents around here that won't do, that won't give consequences to their kids when they F-up. We don't need that. There's too many of those running around already. We don't. So anyways, that's one. It's not the police departments, it's not their job to parent the kid. That's not their job. Their job is to protect and serve the public. And serving doesn't mean that I'm gonna, I'm gonna discipline your kid. No. That's your job as a parent. So anyways, these council people, they're asking the police chief, well, what can be done, uh, because the crime has spiked? Uh, we've seen increases in all these crimes, so what does the police department uh have for an answer? Well, I don't get this question, for me, and I'm talking about me. I don't get this question because these people, these council people voted, they voted to defund the police department in the first place. So I don't know if they know anything about how economics work, where if you take money away in a certain department, then you're gonna have to, you're gonna have to cut, you're gonna have to cut certain positions. I don't know if they understand that. I, I mean, is this the kinda leaders that people are voting in now that they don't even understand simple, simple um things that happen in government? If you're gonna, if you're gonna defund um an entity, a government entity, they're gonna have to cut somewhere. So, what did you think was gonna happen? You people voted for this, I mean, because of a virtual signal that you guys wanna show everybody that, yeah, you're with us. Well, hey stupid. Yeah, I'm gonna call you stupid because that's what you are. You got what you wanted. You wanted to defund the police now that they can't, now that they can't respond to these calls on time, or they can't, you know, they, they, of cour- it, it's gonna be difficult for them to do their job. Because they have less in, they have less in um, what's the word I'm looking for? They have less um tools in the box. That's not the, that's not, that's quite not, that's not quite the word I'm looking for, but that's what I'm gonna use right now cuz damn it, I'm having a drink. And this glass is sticking to my coaster. That's why you're hearing the banging sound. Um, yeah, so I mean, it's, it's, it's common sense. I mean, if you're gonna, if you're gonna defund um a, a government entity, they're gonna have to cut somewhere. You know, the resources is the word I was trying to look for. They're gonna have to cut their re, they're gonna have to use whatever resources they have to enforce whatever they can. And if, if, and on top of that, if a lot of these cops, I've heard that they've, they, a lot of them quit too. And I don't blame them. I really don't blame them. If you got, if you, if you got administration that don't back you up and the public's perception on, of you being bad, I mean, where do you go? You, you're gonna continue to show up to work and take it from the people that think that you're bad? And on top of that, you're gonna take it from an administration that won't back you? I mean, you have no choice but to quit. I mean, is it really worth, is, is the pay worth that much to you that you're willing to put yourself into this mental, this mental war within yourself? You're, you're being forced to come into work when you hate your job? No, they're gonna quit. You're gonna have quality people quit, especially if you have an administration that doesn't back their officers. That's what's gonna happen. A lot of good people are gonna leave. So, with that being said, there's, you're gonna have a shortage of staff. You're gonna have um certain tasks for, task force, task forces that are completely cut because they're not able to fund them anymore. And of course, on top of that, you're, you're gonna have your response time um to calls. They're gonna be delayed because the lack of staff that you have, right? And also, um, then you have, you, you, you gotta enforce priority, priority crimes. You know, like crimes in progress, like murder. Um, like burglary in progress, or stuff like that. But at the same time, it's hard to get to the call on time or as fast as you can if you're limited to what you have. You're, when you're limited to resources, it's hard to, it's hard to police when you don't have the resources to police effectively. So that's, that's my take on, on this problem. I, I mean, I don't understand why these council people, they, they, they act as if, they act as if this is all surprise to them. They should've seen it coming. So, I have a clip here from the actual um session. And I wanna play it for you. Um, I wanna play a part of it and give you guys, you know, cuz you know, I, it's just a way of showing me that this is what, this is how the council people are, are thinking now. So this, this one is from, I think his name is Cunningham, one of the council people. So I'm gonna play this clip.
Uh, thank you, Madam President. Uh, so there, there are two things that I just want to mention, um, or uh, that I thought I'd like to speak to. So the first is um around the carjackings. Um, we do know that it's overwhelmingly young people who are doing this. Um, this was a conversation that was brought up by Councilmembers Fletcher and Goodman last year and um, the conversation a little bit petered out. We didn't really come to a resolution um as a result of this issue being raised to the uh conversation. So, um, it is my intention, uh, and, and so, it, what, where we're seeing the disconnect is with the juvenile uh supervision center and how are we uh, so it's like we could be arresting young people, but then they're going to the JSC and then they're being released and like what are the other options besides that? Because there are young people who are gaving the system, like knowing that they're going to be immediately released. Um, and so, um, it is my intention to bring this conversation to the Public Health and Safety Committee so that we can dig further into it. So for my colleagues, um, I, uh, I will be sure to let you all know when that conversation is gonna be happening. Um, I have meeting uh with Director Cotton today to talk a little bit more about the details. Um, like, is it that we need policy change? Like, what, where are the gaps? Um, and where are the missing practices? Um, I know some folks personally who have experienced carjackings and it's a very traumatic experience. So how are we um holding young people accountable while also addressing that trauma? Is there space for restorative justice as, as a means of accountability? So, um, so, all that to say, we are looking at um hold, as, as, uh, holding that conversation in the Public Health and Safety Committee. Uh, cuz it's definitely something that needs to be dug, dug deeper into. And then the last thing I just wanna say right quickly is, uh, with all due respect, Madam President, there's a lot of council members in the third precinct. There's only two for the fourth precinct and we have a concentration of the challenges, so I would like to be able to ask questions during that part of the presentation. So, um, I, I would really like to not have to wait until the end of the presentation to be able to dig into.
Okay, that's enough for now. So, he's saying that arising crime with the juveniles. Um, yeah, that kind of goes back to what I said in the beginning uh about this segment of the show, is that it's not the police department's responsibility, nor is it the attorney, uh, the district attorney's job to, to, to prosecute these, these, I mean, yeah, it is their job to prosecute these crimes. Yes, it is. But in, if you really want crime to be low, or if, if you want crime to be almost nonexistent, which is impossible, is that your parenting, the parents' parenting skills have to be stepped up. It just has to. Um, not only that, but the lack of having um either the lack of having a father figure in the household is a big deal. And like I said, I was, as I was, you know, I, I, I was uh I, I, I grew up in a house with uh, you know, a broke, I, I was in a broken home and um, and not, and look, there's no excuse to this. I'm glad that it happened in my life because it's made, it's, it's made me, it's made me, I'm not gonna say it as a cliche, like it's made me who I am today, but it made me learn how not to be a parent. Is what it, 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 it taught me. It made me think, you know what? Since I went through this and I know what I was looking for when I was growing up, this is what I'm going to provide for, for mine, my kids, when I become a parent. So, I'm glad I went through what I went through, because without that experience, I wouldn't be able to know what what to give my kids as far as, you know, the correct parenting in, in my opinion. I mean, everybody has different, different ways of, of parenting. Everybody has their different ways of, of disciplining their kids. But let's face it, man. I mean, back in my time, kids were being disciplined. Corporal punishment was left and right. It was like a normal thing. And for me, it worked, even though, even though I grew up in a broken home, it worked for me. You know, um, I'm not, I'm not in jail. Um, I'm not dead. It's because you know, I, I, I just, I, I was set right. I was set right. I was set right at an early age, even though I had my, you know, I, just like every young teenager, young male, you know, we do a lot of stupid stuff. But that's, usually, that would be a, a phase in life. But so I was fortunate to grow from that. I was fortunate to, to take that experience as I was younger. And I blossomed pretty late. I didn't, I didn't, I didn't start to think about my life seriously till I was like twenty-six, twenty-seven years old, somewhere around there. Um, and I've already had established a family. But at the same time, I was working, I was working hard. I was, there was a point where I was working freaking three jobs. Three jobs to provide for, for, for my family. So I was, I was busting my, my butt out because I knew, I knew that I didn't wanna be I don't want, I didn't wanna be like the person who was supposed, my supposed fa- you know, who, who my father was. I didn't wanna be like him. I knew that I didn't wanna turn out like him. Um, so, now, back to this story here about the Minneapolis City Council. I mean, they're, they're spinning that off of as, as um, you know, the juveniles are doing it. Yeah, of course the juveniles are doing it. But at the same time, adults are doing it too. And I, you can only spend so much with the juveniles. Yeah, they're gonna act up and do all these things. And let's face it, a lot of them probably come from broken homes with no direction either. And um, they're not mentioning the adults who commit these crimes. And that um that, that, that kind of uh, that kinda shows you what kinda people these are who get, who, who get into these positions of um of power. You, you get to see the incompetency. You get to see the deception of how they are, you know? This is, this is, this is what they do. You know, they, they, they don't, they don't care about, they really, I mean, if they really cared about these people that they represent, they wouldn't put this all on the police department. Because it's not the, let's face it. The root of this is parenting. It's not, it has nothing to do with the police department. The only time it has something to do with, with the police department is when they have to react to, they have to, you know, go to a call. That's when, when it, when, you know, if, the only issues there are for the police department is if, you know, if, if they're doing something unethical or if they have to, if they have to arrest people, take people to jail. Um, you know, other than that, it's, it, cops are reactive, you know? They're gonna, they're, they're, they're gonna respond to what, to what they have to respond to. And they're not there, they're not there to um be the parents, be the daddy of these kids. It's not their responsibility. Uh, a lot of these cops probably have their own families and their responsibility of being a parent is at home. Not when they come into the job. When they come into the job, they're supposed to just serve the public as executing whatever law or, you know, enforcing whatever law they have to enforce. And, you know, help people, whoever needs help, but to, to, to parent their kid, that's not the cops' responsibility. That's the parents' responsibility. And I keep reiterating this. I keep, I keep going back to this because people need to understand that that these problems that we're having now in society, it, it, it's a simple answer. But yet it's such a difficult, it's, it's, it's a simple answer with a difficult way to, to execute the answer. Because it's parenting. It's being there for your child. It's disciplining them to make them understand that you can't do anything that you want to. So, that's where I'm at with this whole story with Minneapolis City Council asking, oh, why, why is there so much? Why is there a spike in crime? Uh, why, why are the response times to these calls so, so, you know, why are they taking long, you know? Um, yeah, cuz you guys voted for this. I mean, this is, this is what you guys wanted. So, you know, what they say, you reap what you sow. And now, you reap what you sow. So anyways, with that being said. So anyways, with that being said.
The bar is now closed.